Hold on one second. Okay. The Bloomfield Town Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 22nd, 2021 at 7:30 PM during a conference remote meeting via Zoom. This meeting will also be streamed live on YouTube to review and discuss the following. Section 18-10 of the Bloomfield Code of Ordinances, ordinance authorizing the adoption of the Tax Increment Financing District's master plan in the creation of the Town Center Tiff District, the Toby Road Tiff District, and the Blue Hills Tiff District.
Do we have anyone to speak at the hearing?
Not at this time. The only comments I have is for citizen statements and petitions right now.
Okay. So we'll leave the hearing open for a couple of minutes.
Is this where you wanted a summary or just wait for people to speak?
Um. I know that there's going to be a full presentation done at the council meeting so we could do a quick summary and see if anyone has any questions. I do believe that there's probably a question.
We'll save it for later then.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure when.
Yeah.
Mike Goman is here and Attorney Andrea, I think, will be doing this shortly.
Right, because once again, I do know that we have a full presentation in a couple of minutes.
We'll give it another minute.
Seeing that there is no public comment, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second. All in favor? Our public hearing has come to a close. At this particular time, we'll start with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Please note that all counselors are here. Also, in attendance is Jose Guiner, Greg Davis, the Chair of the Library Building Committee, Mark Wiseman, the Co-Chair of the Library Building Committee. Elizabeth Lane is here, our librarian. Nancy Hayes is also here, our purchasing manager, also finance. And of course, our town manager. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and start. We do have a Black History presentation. I'm going to apologize upfront. We've been going back and forth with a couple of different presentations. A presentation was supposed to be from the middle school, but we didn't get that in time. We were going to do the hill we climb, and then someone shared with me another video. I have a dream, and this was done, I believe, by some of the high schoolers. So we're going to watch that at this time, Scott. Or India, somebody.
We've come here today to dramatize the shameful condition. In a sense, we've come to our nation's capital to cash a check.
When the architects of our republic wrote the magnificent words of the Constitution and Declaration of Independence, they were signing a promissory note to which every American was to fall heir.
1963 is not an end, but a beginning. And those who hoped that the Negro needed to blow off steam and will now be content will have a rude awakening if the nation returns to business as usual.
This note was a promise that all men, yes, black men, as well as white men, would be guaranteed the unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness.
It is obvious today that America has defaulted on the promissory note insofar as her citizens of color are concerned.
Instead of honoring this sacred obligation, America has given the Negro people a bad check, a check which has been marked insufficient funds.
But we refuse to believe that the Bank of Justice is bankrupt.
We refuse to believe that there are insufficient funds in the great vaults of opportunity of this nation.
And so we've come to cast this check, a check that will give us upon demand the riches and freedom in the security of justice.
We have also come to this solid spot to remind America of the fierce urgency of now.
This is no time to engage in election or polling off or to take the tranquilizing drug of racism.
Now is the time to make the real promises of democracy. Now is the time to rise from the dark and desolate valley of segregation to the sunlit path of racial justice, to the solid rock of brotherhood.
Now is the time to make justice a reality for all guys chosen.
It would be fatal for the nation to overlook the urgency of this moment.
The sweltering summer of the Negro's legitimate discontent will not pass until there is an infuriating autumn of freedom and equality.
There will be neither rest nor transequality in America until the Negro is granted his citizenship of rights.
The whirlwinds of revolt will continue to shake the foundations of our nation until the bright day of justice emerges.
But there is something that I must say to my people who stand on the warm threshold which leads into the palace of justice.
In the process of gaining our rightful place, you must not be guilty of wrongful behavior.
Let us not seek to satisfy our thirst for freedom by drinking from the cup for bitterness and hatred.
We must forever conduct our struggle on the high plane of dignity and discipline.
We must not allow our creative protest to degenerate into physical violence.
Again and again, we must rise to the majestic heights of meeting physical force with soul force.
The marvelous new militant seed which has engulfed the Negro community must not lead us to distrust of all white people. But many of our white brothers, as evidenced by their presence today, have come to realize that their freedom is inextricably bound to our freedom.
We cannot walk alone.
I still have a dream.
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 I'm caught on red.
I still have a dream.
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 Warhawks, we still have a dream.
I still have a dream!
Even though we face the difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal. I have a dream that one day on the red hills of Georgia, the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners will be able to sit down together at the table of brotherhood. I have a dream that one day even the state of Mississippi, a state sweltering with the heat of injustice, sweltering with the heat of oppression, will be transformed into an oasis of freedom and justice. I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin but by the content of their character. I have a dream today.
Thank you very much, Scott. I, to me, that was amazing. So I thank the high school. I did grab this from a YouTube, so you can definitely go out there and watch it, probably a better clarity. I also just want to say that I just jumped off of their Renaissance program for Black History Month for the high school or for the Bloomfield Public Schools, and they did do a wonderful, wonderful job. I think that will be out there on YouTube as well. At this time, I'm going to ask Greg Davis, the Chair and of the Building Committee. Greg?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council and others. Excuse me, Greg Davis, I'm the Chair of the Library Building Committee. Joining me tonight is the Vice Chair of our Committee, Mark Wiseman. Mark, raise your hand there. And Elizabeth Lane, the Director of the Library. And we just wanted to share with you a little bit about sort of the who, what, when, and where with respect to the Library Building Committee. We're glad to have this opportunity to speak with you tonight and also to share with the public. A lot has taken place since our first meeting, which was on July 29th. This is the first of a series of updates that we plan to provide to the council during the planning phase of the project. The committee has been charged with recommending a new library via renovation, expansion, or other alternatives. The objective of the committee is to effectively, economically, and responsibly maximize library space and bring a state-of-the-art 21st century library to town. As many of you know, Prosser Library was built in 1965, so it is 56 years old. McMahon Wintonbury was built, I believe, in 1972. It will be 50 years old next year. Prosser has historically been subject to severe flooding, and it has numerous physical and operational challenges. Similarly, McMahon has limited space and it's outdated. I believe to a person that we could all agree that it's axiomatic that our library system needs updating, and our citizens here in town deserve more. There was a building committee assembled back in 2016, and the question about whether or not we would have a new library never made it to referendum. Instead, the town approved the Human Services Building and the Public Works Building Project via referendum in 2016. So I've talked a little bit about the why, but I also want to focus on the who, because this is really the nuts and bolts of what we're doing, and I just wanted to thank everyone involved in this process. We have a committee comprised of 16 members, nine voting and seven ad hoc board members. The Building Committee is rich in talent and experience, and we are diverse with respect to gender, race, party affiliation, vocation, and age. And just quickly read off the members of the committee. Obviously, I'm Chair, Mark is the Vice Chair, Bob Berman, Michelle Bononey, Gudunzi Graham-Days, Christine Grant, Lois Hager, Bob Ike, and Jesse White. Our ad hoc members are Ava Biffer, who is the Chair of the Library Board, Leah Pharaoh, who is the Vice Chair of the Library Board, Maxine Ursery, who's on the Library Board, Elizabeth Lane, who is our Library Director, the head of the library, Vangella Buchanan, who is a Bloomfield business owner, Dave Malesco, who, as you all know, is the Director of Leisure Services, and of course, as I call her the glue, Nancy Haynes, our Purchasing and Risk Manager. So we have a depth and breadth of talent on our team, and it's really incredible work. And I just wanted to share to give you a little background of how I think diverse our group is with respect to bringing their talents to the committee. The 2016 Library Committee, as I mentioned, both Mark, Mark Wiseman was the Chair of that process, and Lois Hager was on the committee. We have three Library Board members on our committee. Mention Elizabeth Lane, the Head of the Library. The Board of Ed, Bob Ike is on our committee. High School Administrator Jesse White is on our committee. We have an elementary school administrator. Michelle Bonie is a member of the Economic Development Commission. Human Services Building Committee members, Mark and Bob Berman. Bob Ike also serves on the Public Works Building Committee. The University of Hartford President's Office is represented by Christine Grant. And again, I mentioned the town individuals, and we also have, myself served on the Hartford Public Library for the last 16 years. I chaired that committee for eight years and have been involved in two library projects, and this is my third. The Building Committee has met 16 times since July 29th. We've had 15 regular meetings and one special meeting. We meet every two weeks, typically on Wednesday. The public has attended all of our meetings, and we welcome their participation throughout the planning phase. Our goals are to be transparent and inclusive and to have a successful referendum in November. We have three subcommittees. The External Outreach Survey Committee, Program and Space Planning, and our Construction Manager Subcommittee. The External Outreach and Survey Committee has met nine times, every two weeks, typically on Saturdays, and the Program and Space Committee has met nine times as well, and the Construction Manager Subcommittee chaired by Mark has met three times. And I just say that too, and I'm sure most of you as council members can appreciate the time and energy that volunteers are putting into this project, and we all believe in the importance and the necessity of the library. So we have a great team of hard-working and committed volunteers. Also, with respect to the who, the committee retained Taissu Kim Partners, architects of Hartford. Many of you may be familiar with TSKP. They were involved in the library project in 2016, and they have, I would say, a local, state, and national, international reputation with a heavy focus on school projects as well as libraries. They did the Wilton Library in Connecticut, which is just tremendous. They are the architects for the new Park Street Library at Hartford, which will be done in about four months. And the Yukon Hartford Project, Taissu Kim is also the architect for. Similarly, we retained a consulting firm called Library Development Solutions to assist us with developing, issuing, and analyzing a public survey, and they are also working with us with respect to the space requirements and the program needs at our new library. We're in the process of receiving responses from RFQ for a third-party cost estimator to assist with establishing a budget, referendum budget, I should say. And we have the consultants, we have Taissu Kim, but I would say that we had a pre-referendum funds of about $54,000, and we are still liquid. We have funds that will allow us to work with the third-party estimator, and we have some small mailing fees with respect to the survey. So I think as far as financially, the committee is on budget with respect to the funds that we have. A little bit about the what. Together with Taissu Kim Partners, the Building Committee has put together a comprehensive schedule and timeline for the planning phase with a goal of funding referendum in November. Some of the key milestones include establishing the space needs for the building, community outreach. Apologize. My daughter called, I'm sorry about that. Engaging professional consultants as necessary, site search, site selection, feasibility studies, public information meetings with commissions and boards, council and council committee updates, design options, and then recommending a design concept and referendum budget for council approval in July. And then the final thing on our timeline would be a state library construction grant application. If we have a successful application, we could receive up to $1 million for the cost of the ultimate project. The Building Committee has considered eight sites. We looked at Prosser, Town Hall, Wintonbury Mall, 330 Park Ave, McMahon Wintonbury. We looked at Blue Hills Cottage Grove Intersection, Seneca Road, the Farmer's Market, as well as Park Brook. A short list of feasible sites has been developed through a process, including the Town Planner, the Library Building Committee, and technical analysis with Tyson Kim Partners, and we've narrowed our selection down to three sites. The first is the existing Prosser Library Site, which would include the acquisition of the former Riley Lumber. The second site is McMahon Wintonbury. And then the third and final site is the Town Hall Site. Want to share some really, I think, terrific news. As of today, all of you are familiar with the public survey. Thank you so much for your approval to do so. We've received close to 1,600 responses from our survey, and the analysis is soon to begin. But currently, our response rate is close to 17%. And I did a little research, and I saw that in 2018, with the Human Services Project, they received about 625 surveys. The Building Committee in 2016 received 360. There was an article in the Hartford Current yesterday that talked about the town of Farmington planning for a June referendum to build a new high school, a $137 million replacement project. They mailed their surveys to 11,600 households, and they received 1,100 responses for a 9.8% response rate. Their consultant was stated in this article saying that that 9.8% response rate was the highest that they've ever seen since they've been doing surveys for the last 20 years. So the fact that Bloomfield has stepped up the way it has is just tremendous, and I want to give big props to the school system. We've had a tremendous partnership with the schools, thanks to Principal White and others, but our biggest response rate has been from our students. We've received close to just over 500 responses from kids at the junior high and high school. And similarly, our age group, 65 and older, I think they're about 32% of our response, and we have the age group 30 to 54, 20%. So we've really done a tremendous job of cross-section, of getting feedback from all of our community, and there's still more work that we're doing with respect to reaching out to the community. We have public forums designed, and we're going to be doing some telephone banking to make sure that we reach all segments of the community, because we think that's very important to do so. To date, the top requested features for a new library, you know, I'm just going to list four, but the four top ones are a cafe. People feel very strongly about having a cafe in the library space. The second one is meeting rooms slash group workspaces. The third one is study spaces, and then the fourth one is teen space. Our teens want their own space to fill at home in a library. Sort of the when, and finally, as I wind down, but the Building Committee is looking at the entire library system. So all combinations of the main and branch library locations are still under consideration. As we conclude our information gathering, which should take place next month, we expect to be making a final recommendation on a site. Once we do that, obviously, we will be reporting back to you all as well as sharing more information with the community. But again, this is the first of what we believe to be a series of reports to the council and to the community as to the pre-referendum phase of our work. We hope to return probably the latter part of March with where we are, and I just want to really, again, thank all the members of the Library Building Committee for all the hard work and energy, and also I want to thank the council members for your support and for our residents who we believe will, you know, give us the thumbs up at referendum, because that's really the goal. We want to have a project that will be economically viable, sustainable, and that will reflect the community that we live in, and we're just very excited. And I know I've probably gone a little over. I'm going to ask Mark if he has anything to add, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have. But again, this is sort of a preliminary report until we have more information, and then at our next meeting with you all, we should have a site selection as well as site studies and a lot more detail, but I thought it was important that we at least give you sort of an update as to where we are after 15, 16 meetings. So I'll turn it on. Mark, do you have anything to add?
No, Greg, you've covered everything we've done so far, and I thank you. I just happen to note that it's exactly five years to the day that the 2016 Library Building Committee first reported to the Town Council.
Thank you very much for that detailed update. I know that we've all been excited since the committee was named, and we know that you guys were working, so thank you very much. I think that's just a little bit more excitement for, at least I'm excited. I see Counselor Curtin with his hand up, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank the Chairman Davis for presenting, and if he could also make a note that he doesn't need to call me in regards to filling out the survey. Seven Hickory did their part, so Mr. Davis has been relentless in making sure he made calls and stuff, so he's been working along with the Building Committee hard to get the results that they received. So I just, I appreciate their commitment to this process, because I think it's important to have the community involved at large, across the board, in providing feedback. So I'm looking forward to, you know, getting an opportunity to look at the data that they were able to collect, to see how it goes. The one thing that I'm not clear about in regards to site, does the council play a role in that? In, just for my own, you know, how is that process going to go? Because you did mention that, you know, by the time you come back, you'll have site and all that stuff. I think it's important to figure out exactly the role where the council plays in listening to the recommendation from you all and to have some sort of, you know, agreement that, you know, in order to support us, we want to make sure that it's a viable site that we all agree upon. So just, that was my one question.
I will open, and I think that's a great question. It's my understanding that the Building Committee has been charged with making a recommendation. I think part of the process and why we're here tonight is to listen to council, if there are recommendations or thoughts that you all have. I mean, we have a very extensive list of criteria that we're using to sort of analyze each site, but if there are opinions and thoughts about a location, we're more than happy to hear from you all.
Can I start off?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chairman Davis, I just had a quick question on the survey. I think that's marvelous, the response rate you've got, and it's wonderful that you, you know, you're going to have a, you know, someone really look at those. I'd be anxious to see the results of the data. I did have one question, though, because, you know, we got, the survey has come out several times online. I did have one question though, because, you know, we got, the survey has come out several times online. I assume that you can't fill it out more than once online. But I've also received in the mail, I've also seen it in other places. Just out of curiosity from a sort of data now, what procedures are in place to make sure that, you know, there's no, there's not, there's not enough redundancy in what was put into, you know, to really scotch the results. I mean, I realize this is a need survey, so I don't think it's, you know, it's not voting on a location or something like that. But what?
That's a great question. I'll probably mess this up, so I'll look to Elizabeth to fill in here. But the consultant has shared with us that there is a way that they track email addresses when the surveys come in. And they've also shared that they're experiencing doing surveys that people typically don't want to or won't, you know, do NBA, you know, All-Star ballot and put in ten surveys. It's not that big of, you know, typically not that big of a deal for people.
That's, that's what I sort of thought. And I mean, you know, we got, we got one in the mail after we filled it out. We didn't fill it out. So I didn't think that was really going to be a problem, but I'm glad you're looking at that. Thanks.
Yeah, and I would also say one of the issues that we have found is that we've mailed the survey to every household in town. But if there are multiple people in a household, we wanted to make sure that we hear from all of the members who are of age. And so we've also had, obviously, the ability to do it online and to request an additional survey from the library. And Elizabeth Lane and her team have done a tremendous job of being available for people to, who can't do it electronically, to either call into the library or go to the library or whatever means necessary to make sure that we're hearing from as many folks as we can.
Last question, Counselor Merritt. I'm assuming that's your hand up, sir. You're on mute, is right?
Yep. Am I unmuted?
You're unmuted. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I, I, I think you intimated that you were looking at both of the current libraries to, with the possibility of doing something in both places, and I certainly hope you do that. I think it's, it's, there are definitely needs in the branch. And I think if, especially if you're renovating, it costs much less to renovate. So to the degree that part of, if you were renovating the present Prosser Library as well as adding on to it because we need much more space, there would be some savings as a result. And I think there would be enough so that some money could be spent on the branch and to give it more space and to update it. And I think it would be very desirable to do something in both places. And I just wanted to get that, my two cents on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Council Mayor. I'm going to turn that to Mark because Mark has a lot of information. It's my understanding, though, with respect to the cost estimates, there's not a huge differential between a renovation and a new build. It's typically looking at the size of the buildings that we're looking at. Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but just a couple hundred thousand dollars difference between a renovation and a new build.
Yeah, and and we're going to have a lot more information on that in the following month. But generally, the the sort of scenarios that that we're looking at, and everything's on the table with all three sites, all kinds of combinations. There's not a big difference in order of magnitude yet that we see and probably will not see between one solution and another. But just going back to the idea of an addition at the McMahon Winton Berry Branch, that's certainly been a consideration, a strong consideration. We're looking at the whole system. You know, we're looking at, the system is three parts. There's Prosser, there's Winton Berry McMahon, and there's the online presence of the library, just as important as the other two. So in the end, in the end, you know, we're looking at a main library, a branch library, and that online presence. So all three of those elements are part of this building community's charge to make the whole system better. We're not going to get another shot at this. So it's, we want to do it right for the entire library system.
So I did say that Counselor Merritt would be the last question, but I am going to show some grace to our deputy mayor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to echo your sentiments earlier. This is a wonderful report. I'm glad to hear that there's that much progress going ahead. I look forward to future information that you just mentioned, Mr. Wiseman. I think the location of the library is going to be extremely important on benefiting our town, both and for Counsel, Counselor Merritt's comments about doing something on both sites, which I know is in your, which is in your wheelhouse. So it's, at this point in time, I'm very excited. Look forward to the next time I will be in touch with you with some comments. Because I don't think this is the right time. It's not enough time. So I'll get back to you with that. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Elizabeth, raise your hand up.
Oh, yes. I just wanted to double on what Greg said about the response rate and just let the council know that we did everything we could to get as much feedback as possible. Hence, the sending the surveys to every household and doing the digital approach. We're really trying to get all age groups, all people's voices specifically around the obstacles present during COVID nineteen. So if we could just remind everybody to, in these last two weeks, ask everyone they know to make sure that they already did submit the survey, that would be wonderful.
So I will make sure to reiterate that during my comments. But I do want to say that as, as Chairman Greg said, that the meetings are open to the public. I can tell you that the meetings are very informative. They're much more detailed than what this presentation could provide. But I'm also very clear that they are doing their utmost best to follow the charge that they were given as a building committee. They're doing their utmost best to reach out to our residents to get their input and their opinion. There will be Town Hall meetings. There will be phone calls. There'll be, they're thinking outside the box to make sure that they reach everyone to get their input on this wonderful library complex that we're going to have sometime very soon. So once again, Chairman Davis and co-chair Wiseman, I thank you so very much for what you're doing, leading this committee, and thank you very much for your detailed report.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to have a presentation on our TIF or Tax Increment Financing. Mike Goldman, Jose, I'm not quite sure who's doing.
I'll start off, and we really don't have a large formal presentation at all. But I think every, we've been tossing this around for the last five years at least that I can remember, ever since the legislation got passed. Just a brief summary that, you know, the tax increment financing started off really with two, two sites in town. And after getting counsel and public input, we were able to expand it to three areas in town, which is Town Center, the go, the Granby and Toby Road areas, and also the Blue Hills Avenue commercial areas. So in just, in short, you know, tax increment financing is a way of incentivizing development and more importantly, redevelopment in these areas in a way that that we will be able to hopefully capture any increase in value in the tax rolls, and a portion of that would go back into that area for needed improvements or other incentives that are allowed by state statutes. So I think it's an important piece, important of, of, you know, tool in our toolbox for economic development. And really, we have Mike Andriana here, which is our attorney, Mike Gomans here, the Goman in York put together the report. I want to say Mike was the closer here. He came in at the end, in the late innings and made sure we crossed our t's and dotted our i's with respect to the legal procedures. He helped write the legislation and we thought we had, you know, we chose him because he's the foremost expert. With that, you know, if you have questions, certainly Mike and or, well, both Mike, Mike Andrian and Mike Goman are here and will be happy to answer.
Counselor Merritt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Am I unmuted? I, I wonder about the the borders of, say, the Toby Road site. Has that expanded enough so that would include, say, Goodman Road all the way to Cottage Grove? Or would that be outside of it? Because that's a, some kind of a road from, where Goodman Road comes out on Cottage Grove has always been one of the things we've talked about for years with the connecting to the University of Hartford, so that axis. Would that be included in one of those, in that area?
Believe, and I got the plan here, I believe that Goodman Road wasn't, was part of that. Yes, it, it, it does, not Capaco, but if you look, you know, on page four of the draft that we put out, it shows the boundaries of the of the three districts, and you can see that Toby Road does extend up, that the Toby Road, Granby Street does wrap around the Capaco Center and goes up Goodman all the way up to, all the way up to Cottage Grove.
So it wouldn't, that the, this goes back to the old University of Hartford plan for that.
Properly. Yes, correct. And I guess that was on purpose just as, perhaps maybe that's a way of capturing improvements to open that road again. Perhaps provide a different way of getting, especially.
And we should have a bike, we should have a bike path parallel to that as well going into the university. That would be really good. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I thank you for your hard work, all three of you, on this particular project. I did, I'm sure people had a chance to read through the district master plans to a point where they maybe come up with an understanding of what this is all about. I think the key is what happens after the plans are completed and how we set up to actually deal with any proposals that come in. And I certainly was wondering whether or not perhaps Mike, Mike Andriana might be willing to give us a kind of a hint of what we likely be doing in the next four, four months in order to implement this plan.
Sure. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I, assuming that the master plan is approved tonight, and I had spoken with Jose about this earlier today, I think that the next two major steps for this council would be, one is to put together what I would call, and what's been used in many different municipalities, a tax increment financing policy for the town. So in addition to the plan, that would let developers know kind of the parameters. It would still provide a lot of flexibility, but give certain parameters to developers as to the type and scope of projects you were, you were hoping to, you know, kind of generate within these TIF districts. As I've explained, and I think I've talked through committee and maybe at the last council meeting, you know, the one thing you want to do in a policy, and one thing you want to do with TIF districts is make sure that you're getting, you know, significant development that that's kind of earning the town's TIF revenue. You don't want to do TIF deals for every, you know, twenty five thousand dollar addition. So, so the policy would cover that. So the policy is probably step one. And assuming everything is approved tonight, we'd probably immediately put together a policy to be presented to this council to kind of push that through. The second thing that I would suggest, and this is provided by statute and also the plan, would be the idea of putting together advisory committees for each of the districts, which could include a combination of counselors, town residents, business owners, various things like that. So I think those would be probably the next two biggest steps that the council would probably want to tackle.
Michael, may, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Jose.
Just, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, you know, once the council adopts it, technically, we are open for business in those three districts. And while we're formulating our policies, we would imagine that the council could still take in requests and, and basically rule on each one as they see fit. Am I correct on that?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, yes. As soon as these plans are passed, you know, as Jose put it, you're right. You're open for business. Developers coming up with proposed projects that might want to take advantage of future TIF revenues can come to the council, can be, you know, debated and discussed at council. You know, again, what the policy, and you can do this informally, but also kind of more formally is, you'd probably want, my suggestion would be, you'd want developers to probably kind of come initially to Jose through the Economic Development Office and then kind of work there. And then as it moves along, get it presented to the council if the idea was that a developer wanted to enter into what we call a credit enhancement agreement with the town.
You know, I would add that I think it's important to point out that it doesn't, adopting this doesn't commit the town to ever using it. For example, all it does is give you a tool so that if you, a project comes in within one of these districts that you like and you want to help, you know, get it off the ground and make it happen, you can use this tool, but you're not obliged to. I mean, someone could come in and decide to develop something within the district, but they don't necessarily have to use the TIF mechanism at all. So again, it gives you enormous flexibility, but it doesn't permit you to actually using it unless you decide that it's a good option and to the benefit of the town. You know, the, we like to say that it's sort of a but for tool. In other words, what you're saying is we'll use this policy to assist in a project that but for the TIF component of it might never happen. So you want to use this as a way to sort of close the gap, if you will, especially involving older properties that are, that are obsolete and maybe have remediation issues or any number of things, significant demolition costs involved, and but for the tax increment financing structure, you wouldn't be able to make it make good financial sense, and therefore it wouldn't happen. So then that's where you are going to use, that's where towns use tax increment financing primarily. But again, it's, it's a really flexible tool that allows you the ability to help get a project across the finish line, but you're not obliged to use it either.
Counselor Curtin, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thanks for the presentation, Jose and, and Mike. I know the work that you guys have put into this in, in committee, and we've discussed this. So I'm looking at procedural standpoint now. So we had the public hearing tonight. It's disappointing that we didn't really have folks from the public to op on, on, on the document. But this is where we come in and we're going to have to do our part along with staff. So I know this is going to TPZ. Where is that in the pipeline? Is it going to TPC, Jose?
No, no, this, this statutory, it already went to TPZ. My government, they unanimously endorsed it and said it was consistent with the plan of conservation and development. So that was the one statutory committee that had to go to. In addition, the EDC also endorsed this.
Perfect. Yeah, that's good. Because I know the last committee meeting we were talking, it's going to, so it did happen. Okay.
It happened.
That's perfect. So what I would also recommend, because we're not going to vote on this tonight. I think the agenda is a little bit slayed, and I know Attorney Adriano was saying that we're voting tonight because I know there's colleagues who have questions and concerns about a couple of items. So a recommendation that I will make, as well as for this to go to both to the Finance and Administration Education Committee to be discussed, because obviously there is a staff component to this that we really need to hash out as we go through. And a financial component in regards to, you know, how this would impact the town and so on. So that would be the recommendation tonight for it to go to those two committees, for us to kind of hash things out. In addition to a lot of the things that I heard at the last land use meeting, where I know there were counselors on the committee as well as counselors. land use meeting where I know there were counselors on the committee as well as counselors who weren't, that have some concerns with a lot of items. So hopefully that will come up tonight. So that would be my recommendation. So we're looking at, we're at the end of February. I know we're going through budget season. I wouldn't say to rush into this, we just have to make sure we get this right. A lot of work has been put into it and I think it's good, but we need to make sure we tighten it up. So that would be my comments for now. Thank you.
Councilor Merritt? You're muted. You're muted, sir. You're muted.
Thank you. I listened to the interest to the comments about how we, what we have to do next in order to provide guidelines to what we really want in these areas. And I think that's important because Jose can't do much with it. I mean, as people start approaching him, if they're interested, you say, we'll have this right away in a sense. But that's where they go. They go to Jose and without his having some kind of guidelines of what kind of development or what the parameters of such development to be, whether it has to include a number of amounts acreage or square feet. Or I would suggest that we drag out something the last council did or two councils ago. They spent a lot of time on economic development guidelines for council incentives. And we, that was intended to provide guidelines to what kind of companies we wanted to encourage to come to town. And I think there was a lot of work done on that and I think it, a similar document to what we need for this. So that it's different, but it has similarities where he's going to need some guidelines because they come to him first and he's got to be able to tell them that, okay, what you want to do to a developer, to tell the developer that looks like what the town council and the town want. And so I think that is an important next step and it shouldn't wait too long because without it, Jose is not going to be able to do much with this. So I think, I think we ought to get working on that right away. Thank you.
Councilor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to echo what my last two colleagues have said. But I, you know, I also think Attorney Adriana, of course, sort of getting to the next steps. And one of the things that I think would be very helpful is, you know, I recognize, I guess he is looking at potentially at least drafting these preliminary TIF policies. And Councilor Merritt referred to the abatement policy, which I think the previous council with a lot of public input did a very good job on and we now use determining, you know, or at least as a guideline of what kind of abavements we'll look at. I would love for Attorney Adriana to pass along an example of what he would look at for a general TIF policy. Because, you know, I think this is, I, you know, I've been on the council since this has been worked on. I think we've gotten to a very good endpoint. We have, you know, a very good master plan document. I have some concerns about section seven that would, you know, we can voice later or, you know, I don't, I don't think they're very intense because I think it's mainly making sure that those credit, that those CEAs and those enhancements that we actually provide to the developer actually resound to the public book. We're not, you know, we, this is not a public giveaway of public money. It is a use of public money to produce a quality environment for our citizens. And I think the document states that it actually makes, I read it, section seven again last night. It makes some good points. I think that would be helpful to have another sentence or two in there and make it clear. And then I think that needs to be emphasized in the TIF policy. So I would love to see sort of a sample of where we would start on that. And I think that in doing that, it might probably be helpful if Jose also, if Planner Guyner also supplied Attorney Adriana with copy of our paper policy. So I think that we're all sort of on the same wavelength here. And I think that we should try to get this accomplished as quickly as possible, put in place with those kinds of guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take another or the last comment from the deputy mayor.
Yeah, trying to make it my last comment. I heard comments from my colleagues. I would like to have you consider, these are two or three different functions. The plan, the policy and the advisory boards. The plan is pretty, that's you've had to see, you've looked at that. It just lays out basically the target areas, the areas that we're going to be holding, identifying the taxes, the tax base in that area and using that for the calculation for the TIF. But the policy issue is where I think you really, really want to see some more of and you were already talking about that. I was hoping that we would be able to move on the plan itself because I don't know that there's all that much controversy in it. It's how it's implemented, that's the key. And that's what is my reason for trying to get an idea from Attorney Adriana as to where we go the next step and how long is it going to take. Obviously, we know that this tool for economic development, or in fact redevelopment, is a good one that does not necessarily stick its hand in the town's coffers. It really comes from the development itself and we don't do anything unless some developer comes forward and we make as best a decision as we can. And that decision is based on largely what goes into that policy. I would, I respect Councilman Curtin's comment about sending the whole thing to two other committees at this point. But I would, I would prefer to see if that happens, that the policy and implementation aspects, which are the financial aspects, go to the other committees before we have a chance to approve it. But I think the plan should be able to stand on its own. You know, I haven't heard anybody say otherwise. So that's my comment and I'm really glad it has taken this long. It's appropriate that it takes this long because it's that complicated for people to understand. And also because we are now embarking upon what we think is going to be a new economy. And if you read the article in the Times today, they're really strong about resurgence in the economy as we're getting COVID under control. Now, what does that mean? It means that we might be well positioned, if anything is going to happen in our area, to attract some of that with this, with these tools. So I wouldn't want to see us hesitate too long. I don't want to see us do things that we're not fully agreed on. That's the other side. So I would just make those two suggestions. Try and separate out the plan from the, from the policy and let's keep moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I did say that he would have been our last comment. However, I will show Councilor Wong some grace and let her take a couple of minutes. Councilor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a point of clarification, point of order through you, Mr. Town Manager. I was under the impression that we were able to, we needed to move forward with the plan in order to begin development of the policy and move that forward. Am I correct in that understanding? And maybe Attorney Adriana can speak to that as well.
Yes, essentially the plan outlines the territories, the districts. There's grand list information in there so that if additions are made, we've got a baseline. You know, I think the idea was to try to move this ahead. Certainly the policy then tends to go ahead and refine the work that's already been done in putting the district together. And then obviously we have an advisory committee or committees that looks at these projects. I think the financial aspect is that if growth of a significant kind occurs in a particular district and the council, as far as the plan, the policy and the advisory committee are all in sync that this would work, that a portion of that revenue that's generated by that addition to the grand list within that district goes back to that district for public improvements or other things that are deemed by the advisory committee to be of appropriate nature within there. That could be utilities, sidewalks. It could be amenities of different sorts and so forth. I think with the economy, as David has mentioned, potentially going in that direction. And there's a lot of speculation about where the economy is going. But I do know that if we have in some of these districts significant developments that have already been to a certain extent planned or talked about, we don't want to miss the opportunity by delaying this whole process another year or two years or whatever. I think we can get a draft policy put together in the next month or two and get it back to the council so that you feel comfortable with it and then we can move ahead with it. I think though that we've, we've beaten a dead horse here to a certain extent for the past almost five years, three to five years it's been talked about. But most of the developmental work's been done in the last two or three years on it. So I'd hate to see it drift too far for too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Phil. You know, per the deputy mayor's comments in regards to looking at this in three different ways, a plan, a policy and implementation in regards to the advisory piece of it, the oversight piece of it. We're clearly not ready here for the policy and the implementation, but the plan gets us to the next level. We've been working on the plan for the last year. We've been diligent on this. The land use and economic development, I believe, has endorsed this plan to get this far. Now, this is not the last that we're seeing of this. The policy needs to be developed. The Goldman New York is all over it, especially our attorney Adriana as well. So this isn't a final piece of it. It's just in reference to moving it forward so we can begin the policy development piece of it. There's still opportunities to tweak as we move forward. So I just want to make us cognizant of that in as far as delaying that and sending it to other committees. We've done the work. It's a solid plan. We can tweak as necessary. Let's move it forward. Let's put the policy together and let's start to tweak in the next phase. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much for the presentation. From what I understood was, once you have the plan, it's like you're open for business, right? And to Deputy Mayor, not Deputy Mayor, to Councilor Merritt's point, you want to make sure that when you open for business, people know exactly what you're expecting. People know exactly what the parameters are. So I would be of the opinion that if we needed to take a look at it before we go ahead and approve the plan, that we have the pieces to the plan, that when we actually have someone coming to us, they know exactly what we're looking for so that Jose has right directives to give to people. I think it's better that we do it right going out the gate, would be my suggestion. But once again, thank you so very much to Goldman New York, to Attorney Adriana and to Jose for providing this synopsis for us. Thank you so very much. At this time, I'm going to go into citizen statements and petitions. And I know from the last time, there was someone from the Philly Park Committee that wanted to make a statement and I don't want to miss that this time.
Okay, so we have Roseanne Azarian. I'm going to promote her at this time. And we also have June O'Connor. I'm going to promote her at this time. Roseanne?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hi, how are you?
We're doing well, thanks.
Great. This is so crazy, but I'll give it a go here. As the town council is working to prioritize the needs of the community, we thought it would be useful for everyone to hear about our vision for Philly Park. And this is sort of a collaborative message from the committee. June O'Connor and myself, both coach here, put this together. As the renovation continues, a new Philly Park is emerging. The question is, so what will it become? The simple answer is more, more vibrant, more sociable, more educational, more inclusive. So thought it would be helpful to hear how we see Philly Park. Philly Park can become more of a place to learn. We already have a new sign in place about the park's history. This park can be nature's classroom, starting with the new signage that will identify the trees and flora. The park can also teach us about horticulture and design and maintenance. At the same time, we're planting a seed in our kids, maybe in all of us, about the value of a local park and a public space. We would create walking tours where the Philly Park ambassadors, our BHS volunteers can serve as tour guides. We could also create tours for our accessible trails so people of all generations and abilities can participate. Philly Park can also become more of a place to come together. Partnering with leisure services, we could bring back fishing derbies and the winter carnival. We could start some new events such as skating parties where folks could rent skates and volunteers serve hot chocolate. We could host a yoga class or start a walking group. From concerts to poetry slams, from sunrise services to picnics in the park. There is so much we can do together. We could also partner with the Bloomfield Public Library. Now imagine a reading fest at the park or a movie night or storytelling under the stars. Or what if there was a little free library kiosk where on a summer afternoon you could take in a book under a canopy of trees? Right now, our friends at the beautification committee and the design committee are exploring a memorial garden for those lost to COVID. And we at the Philly Park Committee look forward to lending a hand. So back to the question, what will Philly Park become? It will become more of a bridge to building bridges, creating more community, a community that is open and diverse, inclusive and equitable, all for one, one Bloomfield. So I hope that gives you some of our thoughts and obviously our aspirations. And that's, that's all I got to say. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is June going to?
Yes. Yes. Hi. Good evening to everyone. Roseanne just told you what we want Philly Park to become. We think we can work with leisure services. We can work with the library. We can work with senior center. And that's where we want to be. We, we want to see this thing built so we can get the building part behind us so we can work with these agencies and get more done at Philly Park. It was just about a year ago that the members of Philly Park Committee began to speak to the town council to encourage funding to complete the renovation of Philly Park. Here we are, back again, a year later. As you begin the deliberations for the new library, we're hoping you will include funding for Philly Park in the referendum. This spring, the Island Alberityum will be complete. The plantings will be installed along with signage as well as acknowledgements of donations provided by our residents and businesses. The pedestrian bridge, as many of you already know, is complete and covered with donated pavers, once again showing the awesome support of our citizens. We still have plans for a natural playground, a meditation circle, recommended, by the way, by the mayor, and Woodland Pass in the back half of the park, as well as parking lots, both new and renovated. There is still so much to be done. As a comparison, the community center funded by the referendum approved by voters in November 2016 broke ground in May of 2018 and was completed in August of 2019. By that time, the renovation and plans for Philly Park had been in the works for over 10 years. We're hoping you can champion this project and move Philly Park to completion. Thank you for your time and attention to this long overdue project.
Thank you so very much, Roseanne and June. We do see the progress that's taken place at the Philly Park. I do know that some of our residents were very excited about being able to ice skate. That they were able to ice skate for the first time in a long time at the Philly Pond. So we are taking notice. Councilor Curtin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just have a quick question for Roseanne. Do you know by any chance exactly what we're looking at in regards to completing that project, what the cost is? Have you guys talked about that?
May I, may I answer that unless, Roseanne, do you have information on that?
Not up to the minute information. I'm sorry, I do not.
Okay, Jonathan Thiesy has suggested that the final costing to include the parking lots, which is basically a major cost right there. But the playground, the meditation circle and building and, and building the walking trails in the back could be approximately one to 1.5 million. However, a lot depends on whether there will be a pavilion in the final plans. And I think that is the, the largest part of that money. So I think if the pavilion is not there, then you can take that, that amount, 1.5, down to probably 1 million.
Well, thank you for that. No, I think that I, that's a good baseline. I think it's important and, you know, I appreciate the work that you folks have done over the years, the commitment to, to that project. And I think this fits into the whole narrative that we've been talking about. What can the town do? What controls we have? And this is an example right here where we're talking about building a new library. We have, I believe, the park is a very intricate part of that whole setup within the town, within the center of town. So I believe that's something that we definitely have to focus on. Obviously, you know, through this budget process, we're looking at multiple needs and wants, and we have to figure out exactly how we move forward. But, you know, this is definitely a project that we need to complete. We need to get into the mindset of completing something. You know, I've been on the council now going into the fourth year, and they've been talking about, you know, Philly Park way before that. So, you know, I'm hopeful that we can do something and hopefully we could try to work with Jonathan to get a little bit more breakdown and what we can do right away and what we could hold off on. But we definitely need to move forward with that project. Thank you.
Counselor Gillorenzo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I agree, and I agree with June and Roseanne. You know, we, one of the things that we need Jonathan to do is hopefully during budget season and the next, during the month of March, he can further break that down. But June is correct. The last amount that we were given was around 1.5 mil, and that included all of those things. So we need to know what the options are, and I'm hoping, hopeful that Jonathan is going to be able to provide that as part of either the SIP budget or, you know, part of his budget request during, during the budget meetings. So, you know, the work that June and Roseanne talked about still needs to be done. And, you know, the goal is to finish it off so that the park can become what it's meant to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Roseanne and June. At this time, I don't believe there's any other citizen statements. So I'm going to ask reports from subcommittees. Counselor Wong, Community Service?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Community Service met for the first time 2021, last, the 11th of February, excuse me, due to scheduling conflicts. Senior Services didn't report out, but I do have Social and Youth Services from a staff point of view. Bear with me as we are a bi-monthly committee, so I have a little bit to report out. From a social and youth services standpoint, we did receive a $20,000 grant from United Way to support our Alice Population Asset Limited Income Restraint and Employed. Some ways this money will be used in tandem with current services include working with updating the online infrastructure to include maybe a landing page for more robust and direct information gathering, continuing our rent and mortgage assistance efforts, joining efforts with leisure services and the schools. Translation services, we know from a student engagement perspective that Bloomfield speaks about 11 languages. So youth and social services will be utilizing some of those tools to help our, for outreach from our community. Youth and social services remains committed in rendering assistance for food, shelter, heating and utilities. Access Health has extended their enrollment to March 15th of this year. April 1st, I believe, is the deadline for renters rebate programs. This is, this is for disabled adults. You must have rented in 2020 and you'll receive up to a $700 rebate. Our town staff continue to run robust youth leadership programs such as partnerships with Capital Work First Partners and ramping up our summer opportunities for our youth, up to 22 students during the summer, ages 15 through 17. We are still continuing a 10-year program involving the police and youth relationship building efforts. We do have youth, girls and youth boys programs such as Sunbeams and Boys Pride Groups. We are continuing financial literacy learning opportunities. And we do have Project 3330 Lit Leadership and Training Program. We also host an adult life skills program as well. Information from a social and youth services, please contact 860-95, or you can visit our town website. Moving into leisure services, you can also contact Leisure Services at 860-243-2923 or go to our Bloomfield Town website. We do currently have our doors open for night ball and pickleball. We are ramping up youth and drop-in program services and working with social administration, excuse me, school administration for after-school programs. We are hosting Dream Chasers Academy, which teaches life skills. We continue to host Fun Fridays. We are partnering with the JCC for swim lessons for residents. I believe there are limited slots. So please contact Bloomfield Leisure Services for more information on that. We've also started to plan summer concerts at Rockwell. This location was a big hit last season. So not only for space, but in regards to providing more services such as food trucks and some more vendors. So that's a cool opportunity I look forward to as well. We have ongoing educational webinars hosted by Wittenberry Land Trust. We received a grant to address Lysolane drainage issues. And from a leisure services standpoint, we are planning our third Black Lives Matter mural. So CT Murals is partnering with 39 communities across Connecticut to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr.'s life. The goal is to get this done by MLK Day 2022. So that's pretty exciting that Bloomfield is amongst those, those 39 towns. We are also promoting the benefits of COVID-19 vaccine and rolling out a campaign with the help of some at-large community residents. Among them include Tony Harrington and Don Harris. Our Commissions Beautification Committee, we are adding five more webinars to the 2021 Lecture Series. To date, the BBC has planted over 1,400 bulbs throughout the town center. We are cleaning out planters and the goal is to continue to add more pollinators throughout the year and ongoing. So we do have some quick and educational webinars coming up, March 24th. The Value of Trees webinar, April 24th, one to three is honoring Earth Day and trees for Bloomfield Project. Project on April 30th, we will be having a planting, tree planting workshop. We are looking to identify planting locations in effort to combat climate change and environmental inequities right here in Bloomfield. May 21st, Friday, 10 to noon, include the tree care and pruning workshop. So please look out, please look on our town website for more information regarding the beautification opportunities as well as follow BBC on Instagram for more information. Moving on to Conservation, Energy and Environment Committee, we continue efforts to compost, composting initiatives such as pilot programs for curbside composting, textile recycling and educational programs as well. The CEC will provide a content for Green News section in our local paper, so look out for that ongoing content. We continue to promote home energy programs for low-income households. We are looking into locations for solar panels, flat surfaces like the Human Services Building are really ideal. And we continue to pursue opportunities for Bloomfield to own an electric school bus. And moving into our Family Resource Center and Alliance for Bloomfield Children, report out as well. Working on the Connecticut Cares Grant for Preschoolers serviced, the Family Service Center did service 38 families, provided a Lakeshore Box consisting of early learning materials and throughout a statewide training with Resource Center Alliance for Standards of Quality Training and Knowledge. And from an ABC standpoint, Alliance for Bloomfield's Children, we are working with Villages for Families with Children on Single Father Advocacy and soliciting the help of the current consultant, Randy. So the, that's a really great initiative as father, single father advocacy is a looked-over niche from a social services standpoint. So please reach out to ABC for more information to support those, those programs. And school readiness programs are open for in-person learning at First Congregational and First Cathedral. It's amazing how much our community service staff and commissions are, are boots on the ground. We count on them for so much as far as being in the community. They are super essential to forward the direct contact with our most vulnerable citizens. So big up to them and their teams. The next meeting for our Community Service Subcommittee is April 13th. Thank you.
Thank you. Admin and Education and Finance, Counselor Curtin?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be brief. The Administration Education Meeting was on Wednesday, February 10 at 6:30. We discuss the naming of town facilities and the one area that we were talking about, how do we as a town memorialize residents who have served the town well, folks who may not be here with us and folks who are? And I know we, in the interim, came up with, and I know it was talked about tonight in regards to a memorial garden at Philly Park, and I think that's a great idea to move forward. But I know that, you know, the committee voted on having you put a ad hoc committee together to basically look and figure out how we can do that here in the town of Bloomfield and acknowledging the folks who have done, who've gone above and beyond. And it was clear tonight with volunteers on the building committee and so on. We've had a rich folks, set of folks in Bloomfield stepping up to the plate and giving back to their town. So I think this is a, a, a perfect example for us to give back. And I am looking forward to that committee, and hopefully you can give an update, Madam Mayor, on where you are with that. We also briefly discussed Juneteenth. I know we're waiting some, on some more information from both of you and the town manager. We also briefly heard an update on the affirmative action diversity goals report. There's not much change. I know the report is available on, it will be available with the package. I don't want to go into much. There weren't any really pertinent information that came out of that. We also discussed in regards to our media platform. Obviously, through COVID, we've been using this platform since mid-March of last year. I think it's worked really well for us. Obviously, there is opportunities for improvement. But we did look at how do we move forward and invest in, in our infrastructure, put in some money into that to update our town hall chambers and making sure we have the equipments to, to continue streaming live to YouTube and making our meetings accessible to our residents. And at the same time, we also discussed what role BATV still plays in this. And obviously, we all know it's an independent organization. And I believe that this council still want to do our part in making a donation. It may not be the $20,000 that we've given over the years, but I think we should still invest in BATV because they play an intricate role within the community and there is different other avenues that they could provide services to, to the town. And that's the extent of my report for Administration Education. In regards to finance, we have a meet-in, special meet-in, and it is a special meet-in due to the fact the fall into holiday, we had to shift it to tomorrow. We're going to receive a report from our auditors, Bloom Shapiro. Audit, Audit Financials ended June 30th, 2020. We're going to receive, I, I know each council members did receive the book. If you are available tomorrow, you're welcome to attend the meeting. If you have any questions, please do feel free to, to do so. So we'll go over that tomorrow. At the same time, we're also going to discuss tomorrow the budget process. I know there is various input and feedback from many council members in regards to the process, making sure that we streamline it and make it much, I wouldn't say easy, but, you know, for us to go through that process. But at the same time, I think it's important to make sure we go through a process that our residents could understand exactly what's going on. It's clear tonight and other meetings that we've had, there is an ability for us to convey to the public, you know, what we have to do when it comes to our decision-making and these various initiatives that are going on. Obviously, there is projects that's in the pipeline that needs to be completed, and we're all competing with limited resources. So it's, it's important, and we're going to make sure we streamline a process that can be easy, understandable for the public. I, I expect you engage in that process. It starts, the first budget session starts March 12. So please tune in. I'm going to make sure that we make that accessible for everyone. We're all on Zoom. It's easy to, to get into those meetings. And please feel free to engage us in these Zoom sessions. It's, it's basically your meeting. It's for you to engage with us, express to us the things that you would like to see done within the town. I understand that we are here to do what you would like to see done in the town of Bloomfield. We're nine members on this council, and our job is to, to execute what the, the public at large would like to see. You know, we're talking about the library project and we're talking Philly Park. There is numerous projects around, but things are only going to get done if we hear from you in regards to those individual projects. So please come out and express your opinions and where you see things. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, Public Safety, Counselor Goff?
Hi. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be, I'll be very brief. We reported out last time because our meeting is before the first council meeting of the month. So our upcoming meetings, we have a special meeting next Wednesday, and then we have our normal meeting the following Monday on March. Thank you very much.
Wow, okay. Committee on Committees, Counselor Calhoun?
Sorry, am I muted now? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Committee on Committees is, has not met yet again. We are, have a little bit of issues with trying to schedule. And also, we need, we are trying to also get additional outreach in the community to drum up more volunteerism is what we're for, community support and participation on, on many more of the, of the committees and commissions. It is our desire, it's my desire to get something out into the messenger for additional outreach for the community and township. And the mayor can speak more on a initiative, a project initiative for council subcommittees that she initially had scheduled and has to reschedule that. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to do land use and economic development. Deputy Mayor? You're on mute, sir.
Land Use and Economic Development met last Tuesday. And after many months of discussion and consideration, your committee voted unanimously to favorably recommend the Complete Streets policy to council for public hearing and possible adoption. But because of the activity and length of this particular agenda, it was determined to put this on the next meeting agenda for public hearing. At that time, we are capable of having our consultant make a presentation to the council of the Complete Streets program. If you remember, there was one more presentation in their budget. And this has been a while since maybe you've heard of the Complete Streets. It would be perhaps useful to have that presentation, perhaps useful before, before the public hearing. So maybe the people in the audience, we get a better sense of it as well. I don't know how we can arrange that given the way the, the agenda is usually set up. But the latest draft of the Complete Streets policy is available on the town website if you haven't got one. The committee also discussed revisions to the proposed utility-scale solar energy policy in Bloomfield. This is not something the town is planning to build or spend any money on. the town is planning to build or spend any money on. This is all in anticipation of possible private proposals coming in to do that, to, to build these solar fields. As you may be aware, other towns are, are receiving a lot of these proposals. And without some sense of urgency and preparation, the towns may not have standing to really argue their case. So this policy is an attempt to establish certain guidelines for how these projects might develop and how they would relate to the neighborhoods adjacent to them, how they would offer financial and economic justice benefits to the community. And this is a, this is a policy that's been discussed between the EDC and CEC, both of whom are prepared to, are in support of this. So I think it'll, it'll be, the reason that the Land Use Committee did not approve it last time is because some members hadn't been fully appraised of the information. So that will be resolved by next meeting and that will likely come back also in, in March. So I think it's, if there are any comments on that policy, you can submit them either to me or to the, to the committee. We will, we'll take them under advisement at our next committee, which is, meeting is on March 16th. So that is, that is my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Golf, Councilor Di Lorenzo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Golf Ad Hoc Committee met this evening at 6 o'clock and some of the items we talked about, one of them is on our agenda tonight for the, the mowers. We've reached an agreement on the mowers and this is the grass cutting equipment that's been recommended. We will be looking to get that approved tonight and that will include the different types of mowers as well as the top dresser. The bid went out on it. The cost of it will be done in five annual payments and the contract was reviewed by the town attorney as well. So we'll be taking that up under, I believe, under new business. Another item we talked about were the marketing plans. Steve Howard provided us an in-depth look at how they're marketing the Winton Berry Hills Golf Course to, through social media and other, and the application that you can download and have on your phone. So that was very interesting and he's going to come back at future meetings to provide us with some of the results of that. And we went, also went into some new business regarding the conversion of fiscal reporting. Right now, the Golf Course runs on a calendar year, whereas the town is on a fiscal year that ends June the 30th. So the Golf Course will be switching their fiscal calendar to be on the same calendar that we are on and will report by the fiscal year. So there, that will occur this year. So there may be a little bit of complication reviewing it. You know, the numbers may not all match up right away, but they are going to do that switch over. We also have, went into a lengthy discussion around a long-term strategic plan for the Golf Course. And we're going to be working through Indigo Partners and Dave Malesko, our staff liaison, to figure out how we move forward with providing Indigo with the kind of information they need about what our goals and objectives are long-term for the Golf Course so that they can take that back and, and put that into their recommendations and help us come up with the strategic plan for the Golf Course in both the short and the long term. We also talked about the pumps that everybody is aware of. We had a review of the irrigation system and we're going to need a lot of work on the pumps and we'll be looking to have that come into the SIP plan for review and determination on whether or not that could be approved. We're also waiting for them to provide us with a breakout of different phases, how it can be done, what some of the options are. But the price tag we're looking at is between 200 and 250,000 in order to get the pumps repaired and replaced. And that is critical. If they did not work, that would take, you know, there would be no irrigation on the Golf Course. So anyway, that work couldn't be done until the Golf Course is closed. So it wouldn't be until the winter months when that would occur. So it would either have to be this fiscal year or next. Another item of discussion that continues to evolve is they want to have a memorial event. The, the men's club is planning to have an event for Mark Jacobs who passed away earlier this year. And everyone, I think, is aware how Mark was instrumental in starting the Golf Course as well as the men's club. And so there was some discussion around how that would, event would take place and what the cost of the fees would be for that event and whether or not they could be reduced rates. That, I believe, is the highlights of everything we talked about. I think, as I mentioned, we'll have more coming up on the agenda and then we expect to see a lot of this in our budget discussions as well. And then finally, the short-term and long-term strategic plan from Indigo for the Golf Course. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go on to Council Old Business, 1819-24, considering take action regarding a TIF program. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. After consideration and discussion we had tonight, I was prepared to put off the, the decision on this plan pending further opportunity for the public to comment. I'm, I'm, I'm really concerned that if we do that, that it might open up a wave of, of further discussions and delays. And I, and therefore I'm prepared to move the, move for adoption using the resolution that has been presented in our package. So I would vote favorably to approve the plan at this point.
Second? Any discussions?
Do we need to read the resolution?
Go ahead, sir.
So we should read the resolution? I'm hearing it's a long one. All right. Ordinance authorizing the adoption of the tax increment financing district master plan and the creation of the Town Center District, Tiff District, Toby Center Tiff District and the Blue Hills Tiff District. Whereas Connecticut Center Statutes 105B, the Act, authorizes municipalities in Connecticut to create tax increment financing districts for the purpose of incentivizing economic development and infrastructure and supporting employment, housing, economic growth and other prospects. Whereas the three proposed districts to be known as the Town Center Tax Incentive Financing District, the Town Center parentheses, Town Center District, Toby Road Tax District, Tax District and the Blue Hills Tax District. And collectively within the Town Center and Toby Hills District, this is very convoluted. Pursuant to the Act and the Tax Increment Financing District's Master Plan, a copy of which has been provided separately to the Town Council, which details the creation, structure, development, financing, operation and maintenance of the districts. And whereas pursuant to the District's Master Plan, the town of Bloomfield will capture up to 70% of the future increased assessed property values within each district for an anticipated term of 20 years and utilize up to 100% of the real property tax revenues generated from such increased property values along with private funds to pub, to fund public and private improvements, including public infrastructure, traffic and road improvements, public spaces, streetscaping, redevelopment of commercial, residential, retail, mixed-use development and administrative costs. And whereas the town is in need of economic development and infrastructure improvements in these districts. And whereas the creation of the districts are expected to help provide continued employment for the citizens of the town and surrounding region to improve the, and broaden the tax base of the town and to contribute to the economic growth and well-being of the town and the state of Connecticut. And whereas the District's Master Plan was transmitted to, and a study of the District Master Plan and a written advisory opinion as required by the Act was requested from the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to the authorization and the establishment of the districts. And whereas the Town Council has held a public hearing on the proposed, on the proposal to establish the districts in accordance with the requirements of the Act, upon at least 10 days prior notice published in a newspaper of general circulation within the town. And whereas the Town Council has considered the comments provided by the public hearing, both for and against the district, now therefore be ordained by the Town Council, the town of Bloomfield, section, no, no number, establishment of a tax increment financing district. And that basically repeats what I just said. So that would be all, more, more than necessary of a, of a resolution. But it's all in there presented by our staff. Thank you.
Counselor Curtin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to propose a friendly amendment for this to go to committee. And the only reason why I'm saying that, and I think it's to the point that the deputy mayor said tonight, and even within that resolution talks about public input and feedback. And it was clear that we didn't receive that tonight. And it's something that we don't really do a good job at in getting that information out there. I know it went out there, but I think with time constraint and everything that's going on, something of this magnitude, you definitely want to have public feedback before we move ahead with something like this. So that would be my friendly amendment to refer to committee, try to find a way for the remainder of this month. The next meet-in for land use is on the 16th of March. We'll have time to, to make any additional tweaks. And that document, you know, we need to get it out there. We need to roll it out. We need to get it out there. Yeah, let folks know. Yeah.
Just a point of order with the meeting date of the 16th, that is a budget meeting. So that way it used to be, it would have to be rescheduled.
Okay. So in, in any event, that, that would be my friendly amendment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Curtin. Counselor Di Lorenzo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My only comment, I would offer a friendly amendment too, because I believe in that resolution, it stated that we would include comments. I, I don't know the exact words, but it talked about bringing in comments from the public. Well, as we all know, the meeting, the, the public hearing closed and no one commented on it. So we don't have any comments from the public. So I would, I would make the friendly amendment that we either remove that language or we say that there were no comments from the public at this time. And that we're only voting on the, the plan piece, not the policy or the advisory board. Those would have to either go to committee or come back to council. The plan only includes the establishment of the three Tiff districts.
Counselor Merritt? You're on mute. You're muted. You're muted.
We've hashed this over for five years and I'm afraid we're headed for another five years if we don't do something. And, and the policy itself, excuse me, there's an awful lot of details that might be controversial. I don't think there's much controversy on the policy and I'd like to at least get it rolling. But what choices we make for preferences, that might be controversial. And, and maybe we should have input there. But, you know, we can hash this over forever and put it through 10 more committees and, and it's not going to get any better. And there, there's a reason nobody came up and said anything today. Is it, there's nothing very controversial about passing this. And I, I just think we ought to get it going and not delay it longer. It's taken us five years and, and that's, that's a little ridiculous. I'm sorry.
Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to regenerate some of my earlier comments in regards to understanding that we're just moving the plan forward. We do have opportunity to dive into the policy piece of it and the implementation piece of it. We have been working on this, or I have been a part of this for at least over a year. In every land use and economic development meeting, the, there has been opportunity and the public has weighed in from a subcommittee standpoint. So we, we have heard from the public in this regard. And to Counselor Miss's point, this has been here since before I was on council. So let's move the plan forward so we can get the plan rolling for the policy piece of it and, and really do some meaningful things from an incentivized economic development standpoint. We do know our town is hurting. We have businesses that are leaving for different reasons. So let's make this the most desirable environment from a development standpoint and get the plan moving so we can get some intentional policy in the books. Thank you.
I think I missed your last thingy, but I got it. Let's get the policy moving. Counselor Goff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, this has been an interesting discussion and interesting night. I want to say one thing in general first, and I think that the one thing that we do need to do as a council, and this is no, this is all of us in just scheduling. I was actually surprised, you know, I knew that we were going to have a public hearing on this tonight, but then I was surprised that we actually had a present, somewhat of a presentation by Mr. Goman and Mike Goman and Attorney Adriana, which I think was great. In, you know, I think that it would have been probably helpful and maybe even getting public, the public out for this if we had had that presentation of meeting a year or two ago and gotten more, you know, and, and at least had that out on YouTube and whatever. So I'm, I too am disappointed that more of the public didn't show up to comment. I think in general, the correct process for this is we have a presentation, then in the next meeting, we have a public hearing. Hopefully people come out and comment. And then we think about their comments and then go forward. But all that said, I think that I've become convinced by things my colleagues have said that at this point, there's really no reason not to move this plan forward. I think we do need to spend some time in the policy set, policy, in doing the policy like we did the abatement policy. I, you know, I think ultimately, I, I personally would probably like to see another sentence or two in Section 7 to make sure that it is clear that we are using these money, these monies for the public's enhancement and not to go into developers' pockets. I think that's, you know, that's a big thing I worry about with abatements. And this is just an abatement upfront. But given all that and given the comments and given the comments of my colleagues, I will vote to, to, we'll go ahead and move this forward and, and pass it on and then spend some real time in committee, you know, Finance Committee, the Admin, whatever committees you need to go to, to flesh out that policy. And I think when we did the abate, well, not we, the previous council. So Counselor Merritt and Di Lorenzo, when they did the abatement policy, it was generally joint meetings of the land use and the Finance Committee that, that really spent time on that. But I think we could structure it anyway. So I would like to move ahead. I, I guess, I don't know if it's an amendment or just a comment. The thing that does concern me a little is the, we're open for business. Now, what we heard is anything that came in, we have to approve. I guess I would like to see us pass the plan, but sort of, you know, town staff making it clear we have a plan, we're working on a policy and we're not really interested in getting a whole lot of, a whole lot of activity until we have a policy in place. I, I don't, I, that's something I think may be more of a comment. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of things. I too is disappointed that we can get a lot of public comment, but I'm wondering if that's even possible in these, in the environment we're presently working in. We've never had more than five people attend these meetings. And in addition to which, at our last meeting in January 25th, there, the consultants were there and did make a pitch and presentation, not a major presentation to the council about what this was about. So I'm a little bit reluctant to cast out yet another net to see if we can find a few more people to make comments on it. There is plenty of opportunity for citizen involvement or some community involvement when you get to the advisory committees. They'll have a lot to say. It, it, it won't be, it'll probably be more people than we're, we've been used to getting as attendees at any rate. I also was concerned about the businesses, you know, starts with approval of the plan, but that doesn't necessarily mean we couldn't begin to advertise and let be known within 60 days, we'll have a policy. No one builds a project or makes commitments in 60 days anyway. So you've got, you've got some time. I'm not happy about an amendment to the, to my motion, which would send it back to committee for the discussion of the plan. I think the plan has already pretty much been planned. I think it would be appropriate. I would accept the notion of, of the policy pieces going to other committees so that the council is fully informed and can participate in that. But I think it's time to move But I think it's time to move, cut bait, uh, start fishing on this one and, and, and get, get started. I would, I would keep the motion as is. The only reference that I think Councilman DiLorenzo pointed out is in the resolution where there were so many for and so many against, we can change that language and this. So we had a public hearing and it wouldn't be the first time we've had public hearings and no one showed up to say anything and actions were taken. That's our role. That's our job. Thank you.
Counselor Curtin.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. I appreciate all the comments. I will have to vote no on this because I do believe that, this is different. This is, this have implications across the board. I mean, I've heard other council members talking about there's things they would like to tweak. Once again, if we're saying in one breath that the policy is what's important and we need to get that going, then the question is, what is the rush to vote on this tonight? Why not give it a shot to see if we can get some public engagement into this? We have until the month of March. So once again, if it's the council desire to move ahead and vote on this tonight, then so let it be. But the point is, if we're not rushing into anything and we still need to work on a policy because there's a lot of question marks, public hasn't engaged, I don't see the reason moving forward. So that, that would be my, uh, take on this.
Thank you, Counselor Wong.
I think you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate that we do have the opportunity for the public to weigh in. The public has weighed in in different opportunities in subcommittee. I, I've been in all of the meetings. Uh, we have the opportunity for the public to weigh in during the development of this very important policy moving forward. But to get to that point, we really need to move the plan forward. There's opportunities for us to tweak as necessary if there's a consensus. But let's get this going. We've worked on this for so long. We have been diligent in our, um, in our, in our inputs from a council perspective. Again, this has been endorsed by the EDC. This has been endorsed by TPZ. We've had public weigh in, other elected officials have weighed in, the public has weighed in. So let's move it forward. Let's show the community that we mean business when it comes to economic development. And I do agree with, um, the council comments as far as, uh, we're not open for a business. This is not what it means and we can make that very clear from a staffing standpoint. Jose did come, come in and make those comments as well. But in order to get to the next step, we need to be diligent and approve this step. We've worked on it. It's come out of land use and economic development. We've, we have paid attention to it. We are not rushing here. We still have to move forward in the next phase and develop really solid, good policy. So the, our phases to this. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the question.
Good.
Oh, did, did I miss something?
Nope.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, so there's a motion. There's a second. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
That's a no vote for me, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so what has been approved, I believe, is the poli, is the plan. With the notion that no activity is going to take place on the plan until we have a policy. Okay? All right. Um, consider and take action, I'm sorry, uh, 2021-11, consider and take action regarding adoption of resolution neglecting cemetery program grant. Phil, are you gonna speak to that?
Certainly I can. The only reason this is on here is because the original grant had Robert Smith's name on it. And we now, by legislative action of the council, have to put Phil Shank's name on it and send that into the state. So that's what you're doing, uh, if you approve this this evening.
Is there a motion on the floor?
No move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. New business, uh, 2021-54, consider and take action regarding tax refunds. Is there a motion on the floor? Counselor Merritt, are you making a motion, sir?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move to approve.
You're moving, what's the motion, sir?
To approve the, um,
Refunds.
Refunds, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. 2021-55, consider and take action regarding Winton Berry Hills Golf Course Turf Maintenance Equipment Lease Purchase. Is there a motion on the floor? Uh, is there a second? Um, do we need to have any discussion on this? Is, um, I think Counselor DiLorenzo talked about it.
I did, Madam Mayor. Unfortunately, I cannot download the, the council package, so I can't read the actual resolution. But basically, if, if either Counselor, or Counselor Goff has that resolution, they were both in the, um, meeting tonight.
I have it on, sir.
Oh, thank you, Indy. If you could read it, that would be great. But we are, uh, planning to move forward with this contract and, um, the total cost is $271,061 and it will be broken into five annual payments. So Indy, if you wanna read the motion.
The town council approves the lease purchase agreement between the town of Bloomfield and John Deere Financial contingent upon final review and approval from the town attorney and recommend execution by the town manager on its behalf.
Thank you. And just to add to that, it was approved by the town attorney and this money is coming from the Winton Berry Hills operating budget. It's not coming out of our budget. So the town budget, it's coming from Winton Berry Hills budget.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll say yeah.
Discussions. Counselor Goff.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to, uh, reiterate what Counselor DiLorenzo said at the very end, and sort of just for anyone watching. The whole point of this is, you know, a lot of times, a purchase of equipment like this would be a capital expenditure of, you know, two, and I think the number, uh, Counselor DiLorenzo, it was 261,000, whatever, uh, would be an upfront capital contribution. The golf course has structured this in at least, you know, lease, uh, purchase agreement in such a way that instead of, uh, the council have to include this on our SIP plans or, uh, you know, as, as a, uh, one-time large investment, we are able to essentially amortize this over five years. So I think this is creative, you know, sort of creative financial management by the, um, golf course. I think it's good because it, you know, it pays for, for some of their capital expenditures via operations and I'm fully supportive of it. Just wanted to throw that a little more color in around that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is your hand up, Joe?
Yes.
Do you see your raise hand button on your Zoom, sir?
Yes, I'll find it. Okay.
I'm just saying, you can speak now. After you speak, oh, wait a minute. Look, there it is. It's right there. Okay. Yes, Counselor Merritt.
And I aim to please, but I, I, I just want to compliment the, uh, the, uh, golf, people for, for voting for this, not, and not asking for the town to subsidize them. I think that's great. And I, I think it should be paid for by the users of the golf course. Thank you.
Excellent. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
Okay, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry. Before you leave council business, um, can we, um, I, I didn't get a clarification on the vote for the TIF plan. I have one opposed, but I only have eight people that voted. I need nine. So somebody didn't vote.
So.
Can we do a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Merritt, we're going back to TIF.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Curtin? Counselor Wong?
So.
Counselor Goff?
Yes.
Counselor DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun?
Yes.
Counselor Politis?
Yes.
And I'll go yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, report from our town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, several things. Obviously COVID and the whole vaccination program has been a major effort in the community in a variety of ways. We've heard some of those this evening. Figures from the State Department of Health and Human Services. As of last Friday, 4,087 Bloomfield eligible residents had received their first dose. This is about 19.27% of our estimated population of 21,0021 that the state is using. Obviously, we've been working, uh, all of us and, uh, I know the mayor in particular has been with the health district, uh, to schedule, uh, clinics and work with some of the more challenged, uh, members of our community to get them vaccinated. As I, I think I passed along to all of you, I had, because of my age, I'm over 75, uh, I had the opportunity of going to, uh, get my first and, uh, this past Thursday, second vaccination in West Hartford. And, uh, the ability to help people, uh, on, uh, with walkers, wheelchairs and, uh, others was, was really outstanding on the part of all those waiting in line, as well as the health district personnel as well. So I wanted to make sure that everybody knew to keep an eye if you haven't been vaccinated. And it's my understanding, the governor today issued new, uh, guidance for those in the 55 to 65, uh, year age, uh, group as well. So, uh, that'll be moving ahead. So, uh, keep your faith and we'll try to get everybody vaccinated in Bloomfield as quickly as we can through, through our health district. The second thing I wanted to talk about is to, around two weeks ago, I did sign, based upon the council's approval, the, uh, agreement that the town has with MRI Incorporated, the recruiting firm for a town manager. So that process is underway. And, uh, in the agreement that we have, that'll take probably 12 to, uh, 15 weeks to get that completed. So we should have somebody on board, uh, in, uh, late spring probably, or at least, uh, the council will be, uh, going through a process under the able guidance of Sharon Howe of our office, who's working with the consultant. Uh, the third thing is that our monthly financial report, I received it today and our tax collections are keeping up with, uh, where they should be. We've had really no COVID impact on collections. Our, uh, both revenues and expenses are along in fine shape. No problems, uh, in, in that particular area as well. Uh, also, we received today, uh, labor contracts from the Board of Education, which have been posted on, uh, the town's website or will be tomorrow. Uh, these are for the teachers and the administrators. Uh, those have been forwarded to the council. The council has 30 days to, uh, either, uh, really indicate that they're not happy with those contracts and can, uh, in essence, work with the Board of Education to try to, uh, make changes. Or more than likely, uh, no action is taken whatsoever. And after the 30-day period, those contracts go into effect. They are in essence accepted, uh, by the town. So, uh, those will be something that we need to be looking at, uh, over the forthcoming few weeks prior to our next council meeting to see if the council wants to take any action. Uh, lastly I have is that the Board of Education, it's my understanding, will be taking up their budget, uh, this Thursday evening. And, uh, we anticipate that we will be receiving copies of their, uh, budget document the beginning of next week as we really delve into the town's fiscal year 21, uh, 22 budget. So that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Curtin.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for the town manager. In regards to the town manager search, what is the timeline? And I know the last search, we had, uh, a working committee. Has that been set up? What is the process, uh, right now, um, as far as that goes?
I think Rickford, Sharon was working with the mayor to get a committee put in place to start working with the consultant. I don't think that's been completed yet, but should be, I would think, very soon.
So when do we expect, uh, them to start to work? The consultant firm to come in and start doing some preliminary work and gathering information?
That's what they're doing right now is gathering, starting to gather information about the town. The, the, the hard numbers, the population demographics, uh, budgets, uh, all of that sort of stuff. They've been doing that, I know through the website, uh, and whatnot. So I'm anticipating probably this coming week or the week after, they'll be starting to, uh, get in with whoever the mayor designates to serve on the, uh, on the advisory committee or committee that they, that is put together to, to work with them.
Cause I know the first, uh, the first time around, that these consultants met with individual council members. When would that process take place?
I don't know if that's really been set up yet in terms of the schedule. The schedule calls for 12 to 15 months. So you're talking, or excuse me, weeks.
Weeks.
My gosh, weeks. So I would anticipate that this, since we just signed a contract two weeks ago, that those types of meetings will be set up probably within the next few weeks, Rickford.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Wong.
I think you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted a kind of a procedural, some procedural information from the town manager, uh, through you, Madam Mayor. As far as when are we gonna have the opportunity to kind of dive into the details of the teachers association contract? Is that gonna be in the next executive session? Is that something that we have to talk offline individually with you about?
I think that what you might wanna do, Danielle, is look at the contracts and, and I think they've been forwarded to you and go through them. We had asked in the, the last time we had the contract, three years ago, the superintendent had included a highlight of them in terms of where the major changes were. Uh, that was not accompanying the contracts today that were submitted to the town clerk in accordance with the state statute. And I asked the town clerk to get back to the superintendent and in essence, give us a summary, executive summary, if you will, of the major changes in the contract. So I'm hoping and anticipating, I think the teacher's contract is a one-year agreement, which means that under the state, uh, scheduling process, that they'll probably be back starting negotiations in about, uh, six to nine months before, uh, they, they move into it next, uh, this time next year. And the other contract with the administrators, I believe, is a three-year contract. So we've anyway, we've asked, uh, I've had, uh, Marguerite Phillips, the town clerk, contact the superintendent's office to see if we can't get a executive summary of each contract with the highlights in it, as soon as we get that back. Uh, there's a 30-day requirement and I think that's up before, uh, your, uh, your second meeting. I'd have to check the calendar. Uh, but you do have the, uh, March 8th meeting. And, uh, you know, we probably wanna look at that in between now and then. We can put it on the agenda for, uh, review and discussion and, and, uh, see where we go. We'll also be by that time in the midst of the budget. We'll have the Board of Ed budget, uh, in detail, the, their budget books hopefully. And then we can go ahead and, and see maybe what the impact of that is within their budget.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll await the executive summary. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Goff.
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I just, uh, wanted to, uh, follow up on what, uh, your manager Shank just said about, uh, 30 days. Uh, so we be, or it's not leap year, it's, uh, and we're in February. So I think 30 days will be two days past our second meeting. And, uh, we got this today, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So we got it today, so, uh, 30 days would be two days past the second meeting in March because it'll be four, four weeks from today. Thanks.
Yeah, there's always the opportunity to set up a special meeting as well, you know, so.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the idea of an executive summary was very, very welcomed. I started reading that today. I, it was, it was almost as exciting as the, uh, bond counselors books to read. But, uh, hard to come up with anything judgmental or evaluative because I'm not compared, nothing to compare it to. So I was wondering, uh, I know we're, you have two other, uh, unions that are seeking contract amendments. Would, would, would they be more appropriate to be reviewed by one of our committees? Finance or A and E or something like that? Would, would, would they be more appropriate to be reviewed by one of our committees or finance or A and E or something like that? Just so that we're, there's a cohesive chance to evaluate rather than each one of us look, take, taking a, a, a look at it separately and coming up with certain ideas.
Well, the council's actions, if you read the statute, are very limited. And essentially, the, the town council is not really heavily involved with the Board of Education contracts or the negotiations. You are allowed to have one member, I believe, under the statutes that's an observer in their negotiations. I think what you have in front of you or that's been distributed and will be on the website is the actual contracts that have been already negotiated, approved by the Board of Education and the, and the collective bargaining unit. So now, under the statutes, the council is a legislative body for the community has the option to be able to say, we find these inappropriate or unacceptable. And we are going to take the actions that are specified in the statute to either go back to the bargaining table, enforce a negotiation or and eventually go to court over them. So these provisions and the statutes were put in place about twenty, maybe thirty years ago because of, at that time, the Board of Education has had independent authority to approve the contracts as they, as they came forward. But the council, for instance, cannot really get into the details of the contract because the statutes pro, really prohibit that. It's more you have to accept the whole contract as it's been negotiated. Or you say, no, you're not accepting it and we go through the process. I will get a more definitive outline of what actions the council can and cannot take under the statutes in regard to the negotiations with Board of Ed bargaining units, so.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. So Counselor Curtin had made reference of a committee that's going to be looking over the policy for naming and things like that. And just to inform everyone, the members of the, the committee are Ruth Danmarketti, Halistin Graham Days and Don Harris, and they've all agreed to be a part of that committee. So Dave Molesto, who is the staff liaison, will set up that meeting and get them to start reviewing the policy that we currently have in place and to see how we proceed with that. Town Manager Shank talked about the COVID nineteen testing. I do want to make clear for the recording for my input on the COVID nineteen testing, setting up additional sites is done outside of my job at the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District. And on days, I do take personal days to work on that project. So I wanted to make that very clear to our council and our audience. We will be setting up additional clinics in Bloomfield, which would be great. Moving around, some of the churches will be holding clinics at their site. Now that, starting March first, it's going to be fifty five and older. And we're just going to be going throughout the month adding, widening that cohort. So having additional sites would be great because, as we have seen on the news, the black and brown people, our people are underrepresented. And sometimes they just cannot get into a vaccination site. So we're going to do all that we can here for our residents to educate them. We did do a couple PSAs. We did a roundtable with faith leaders and Dr. Gary Rule and Amy Kraus from the Health District. We also did an interview with Dr. Reggie Eady of Trinity Health, New England. So we're providing education, information and hopefully access to those who are desirous of getting the vaccination. The Community Awareness Task Force will be having their Black History Program on Wednesday. India, is it at six o'clock? India?
Yes, it's at six thirty.
Okay, Wednesday at six thirty. They have a great program planned. They will be speaking to some of our longstanding residents here in Bloomfield. For example, Joe Suggs, who used to be the mayor of the town, and Mr. Don Harris, who sits on the the Board of Education, along with others, talking about the history of Bloomfield. One of the things that they will be talking about is the article that came out in the Hartford Current. They were both here. They both have a length and breadth of knowledge about moving to Bloomfield and the difficulty they had and where we've been, where we are and where we should be going. So if you have time, please tune into that event. The library was doing a book study on Anti-Racist, the book. They had a discussion last week, Tuesday, I believe they have the continuation and conclusion of that discussion on this Tuesday. There will be a tie that bind event on Thursday. We had one last year where we partnered with Howard Cahill and the Prosperity Foundation. That event will take place on this Thursday again by Zoom. And I believe that that starts at seven PM. The flyer, I believe, is on the website and I also believe it was in the newspaper. Um, I believe that is all that I have as announcements. Once again, please remember the library and the, the survey for the library. If you haven't taken your survey as yet, please do so. If it came in the mail, you can fill it out and send it back. If not, you can go to the website and fill it out. Please, let's add our voice to this important project. I think that's all that is for me. At this time, if I can have a motion to approve the January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one meeting.
Moved.
As Counselor Merritt used his hand, his hand, I saw that. And Counselor Curtin had, so Counselor Curtin, Counselor Merritt, any discussion? Counselor Goff.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. And I just want to make two comments on this seven minutes, very minor, but I didn't have the chance to send these earlier to the clerk. This is the January twenty fifth for January twenty fifth. But in any case, with the first set, the first set, in the presentation of the citation for the Lady Alba Scholman, the minutes don't show that you, I believe, read the resolution from the DTC, which sent the, the question to Admin Education. So I think that should be included in the minutes. Later on in council comments, I make a comment about the Greenway in New Britain, which is the Bee Line. It is, India, it's, it's like the insect, B E E. So it's the, the, you know, New Britain is the bee city. So I had those two, two changes. So I would ask for a friendly amendment that we approve the minutes with those two corrections. Or just adjustments.
Counselor Curtin.
Yeah, yeah, Madam Mayor, I do accept the friendly amendment for the correction of the spelling.
And I think Counselor Merritt was saying that he seconded.
Yeah, but in regards to the other part of it, I think this is something that we have to be very aware of. When it comes to the minutes, I think we, we try to go back sometimes and I believe change things the way we would like to see it. But I think in this case, I would have to double check with Counselor Goff is saying in regards to what India did in regards to her summarizing what she put into the notes. I don't think we could just go and just tell her to put the things that we would like to see. I think it's, it's her job to take the minutes and reflect, you know, you know, discussions, but not in details with everything. So I'm not sure what that was all about.
No, point noted. And I, I should be, in reading through the minutes, I remember the citation that the mayor made for Alba, for the Lady Alba Scholman. But in my recollection, so I will say it was my recollection was, then the mayor also introduced and read the resolution from the DTC about creating a memorial garden, which went to the Admin and Education Committee. And the only suggestion I'm making is that the minutes reflect that that happened. Does not have to, I mean, I, I'm not insistent that it include the entire resolution. I just want to make, you know, that, that activity did happen. So I was just asking that that be included. And I, I am very willing to, you know, accept that however India records that is fine. Just think it should be recorded in the minutes.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. A motion to accept the February eighth, two thousand twenty one minutes, is there a motion on the floor? And second, any discussions?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I, I will make one, one adjustment to this. In my comments, I mentioned, I don't have it in front of me. I think I could describe this. It's very minor. Oh, here it is. I described the new Thomas Frank book on populism. The name of the book is The People, Comma, Know: A Brief History of Anti-Populism. That's the end of the title of the book. And then the minute say, and the story, it should say, it tells the story. So after popular anti-populism, a quotation mark indicates into the title. And then, and it tells the story of civil rights leader, very minor change.
Okay, um, are we accepting that?
Accept those changes.
Excellent. All in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so just one quick comment. I know that these meetings are taped and I know that India is doing her best trying to catch everything. She's not going to get it verbatim. She's going to get it the way that we say it. And I'm sure if she's confused about it, she'll go back to the recording and listen to it again. Sometimes we misspeak, right? And if we have misspoken or if we have quoted incorrectly and she writes it the way we say it, that's a part of the minutes as well. We can't go back and change it and have her change it. So once again, I know that she's taking notes. It's also being recorded. So if there's any confusion, I know that she goes back and look at the recording. So let's show some grace. With that, I will go ahead to council comments and I will start with Counselor Goff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And actually, I'm glad you, you started with me because I want to echo what you just made about the comments you just made about the court of, court of the council. It was not my intention in any way, shape or form to, in any way, belittle the incredible job she does in, in keeping track of all these minutes and doing them. Usually, you know, I think a lot of us in these, these, these knit edits earlier, I, I just did not have a chance tonight. So I, I certainly want to echo your, your comments there. So I, I will be relatively brief, but I did want to, you know, I did want to make a comment of, about several things on council that are coming up that tied in with something I attended. On Friday night, I attended actually a Darwin Day celebration. And that is a celebration in the state held by a number of the secular organizations. And the interesting thing about it was the two guests at, the two of the dignitaries at the meeting were Senator Blumenthal, who usually attends most years, actually in person, generally helping Stanford. But the other guest was our Lieutenant Governor, Susan Vaisewitz. And what was very interesting was she spoke about several things that are either coming up with the council or one that I, I would hope to bring to the council shortly. She spoke a lot about beginning, hopefully in the next few months, beginning to have in-person meetings with constituents and legislative groups again. And I know we echoed that tonight with the Admin Education meeting, trying to get ready for having in-person meetings and hopefully hybrid form. But then she talked a lot about the states, the state's initiatives on climate change. And we have, as you know, from last time, the C E C presented to the council. And we will be looking at a climate change resolution from our C E C. I think first in the Admin and Education Committee meeting a week from today. And then probably Finance next month. And she was really stressing the emphasis that the administration is putting on this and putting on change. And interestingly, one of the things that is coming out of the administration this year will be the bill, will be a bill allowing towns to charge a conveyance fee on real estate in order to preserve undeveloped land. And you may recognize that because the, this council has taken up, that is a resolution supporting a a pilot bill and thing, and, and various attempts to get that kind of legislation into the legislature for the last few years. I don't think it came up last year, but because of the COVID issue. But that will be that the governor, that is part of the governor's climate change activity. And so something that I, I will be looking and seeing where it's actually added the, you know, within the state legislative process. And hopefully we can take that up, you know, within, within the council again. And that would also be a source of revenue to hopefully act on some of the climate change planning that will, will be in the resolution that, that we'll be looking at. I think that's, I think that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Counselor DiLorenzo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. So I'll be, try to be real quick too. Three things I want to say. So the library, great presentation. I appreciate getting that information. That's the first time I really heard more details and an in-depth presentation on what's going on with the library building committee. And I thank Greg and Mark for that. My, my preference, if it matters, is I would love to see the location be, you know, town center, either in the existing location or I believe they mentioned Town Hall. And I also agree with Counselor Merritt that we need to do something with the Faith McMahon Branch Office as well, Branch Library. Probably, I don't know if that's remodeling it or what, but I do think, you know, if we're doing one, it makes sense to do both. Second thing, Philly Park, please, let's finish Philly Park once and for all. There's not that much left to go. We can get the final numbers out of, from Jose's office, I'm sorry, from Jonathan Thies's office and see what we could do about finishing that park. Maybe we can't do both parking lots, but we can maybe at least do one, one of them. Other than that, I think it's so much so well on its way to being done. And it, and it can become and be used for so many different things, as you heard tonight from our co-chairs, Roseanne and June. Last thing I'll say is the TIF. I want to say I'm a little, although I appreciate all the work that Goman York and Jose did in the presentation, I am a little bit disappointed in the presentation. I think they did a little bit of a disservice to the full council because those of us who serve on land use and economic development have been through the document as Counselor Wong mentioned many times and Counselor Curtain. We've seen it firsthand. We've gone through it. It's eighty pages long. You know, but that plan, I think the presentation tonight should have shown the three TIF districts, how they were set up and what went into that plan to create it. So I know it's not perfect and I know it's not going to be the be all, end all. But we can make those updates in the future as we get through the policy and the advisory board pieces. But I think if the full council would have been able to see in more detail what Goman York did on that plan, I think it would have been much more helpful and maybe would have helped the discussion move along further, a little quicker instead of a lot of the questions that we had could have been resolved by seeing what was in the three TIF districts. So I do feel that that presentation was a disservice to us. It was not done the way I think it should have been done. And I think that delayed, that caused a longer discussion to have to take place. But of course, it is in the packet. So I know when council has their leisure time can certainly go through it. I know that there are some more changes that need to be made to that. And we'll have to figure out, you know, when that iteration occurs and when we bring that, when we bring that back. And I believe, oh, I, I had no idea that the next round of vaccines is going to open on March the first. And guess what? I, I fit in that round. So I'm really excited about that. So I, I will be looking. So I will be looking forward to getting my vaccination. And I hope that everyone else who is, you know, in that category and above has gone to get theirs. So that's it for tonight. Be safe and talk to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Politis.
Sorry, wrong buttons. Just really quickly, we're coming into budget season. And just, you know, just want to reach out to everybody that's out there listening, either attendees or YouTube, and just let them know that it's time to be engaged. It's the most important time of our of our year. It's most direct impact on our citizens. So get engaged. If you don't, then you may not like the outcome, unfortunately. And if you don't get engaged, then you don't really have any excuses to complain about the outcome. So good night.
Thank you, Counselor Calhoun.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to firstly say thank you to DPW. They have done a wonderful job here in town with keeping up with our back-to-back storms, mini storms, rain, sleet, and the light with our weather. Thank you to our town manager, Phil Shank. You have come in and stuck with us. And we thank you for continuing to go through this process as I won't say replace you, but have someone fill in hopefully to the standards in which you have upheld the town of Bloomfield. This is our last meeting for Black History Month. But I would encourage everyone not to look at it as the end-all because Black history is American history. And we do move forward. We do learn more and more, not just for the names that are, that we hear on a regular basis, but engage and do a little more research on those that have impacted those that have been out front. And thank you all those that are online, listening with us and have stuck with us through this evening's meeting. And everyone, have a good evening.
Counselor Merritt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am very happy about the progress we made on a number of things. It's been a great meeting, I think. I also was happy about the library presentation. It looks like they're doing something, which they need to do if we're going to have a referendum this fall. And I'm very happy about the TIF passing. You know, we need to keep these things moving. There's a need to do some things in economic development, and this is a key piece for it. And it's been a long time since we've had much grandness grow, so it'd be a good thing to get going. I have a suggestion, and I think we're not, I the comment came up by Counselor DiLorenzo that the coverage of the TIF in this meeting was not very thorough. And it never, it almost shouldn't be because it should be covered completely at subcommittee meetings. And in the past, we have, all counselors have been invited to sit at the table at subcommittee meetings. And so if you were interested in a subject that a subcommittee was working on, like TIF, you were able to participate in a conversation on it and get involved in it. And most of the nits and the information is, it comes out at subcommittee meetings. We don't have time at council meetings. So it's better to have everybody informed when they vote on something. And if you're able to go to all subcommittee meetings, or some people do actually go to all of them, I wouldn't. But the way it is now, in the last couple councils, I haven't felt welcome. And you're not really able to participate in a meeting. You're just out in the audience. And I just think it would be useful to invite all council members to all meetings, all subcommittee meetings. It wasn't harmful in the past. There is a, you know, normally a preference to recognize members of a committee first, but participation by all council members interested in the subject certainly works out to make an informed council on every subject when they come to vote. And otherwise, you have to cover everything again at the general meeting. So I would recommend going to back to what we did there because that did work out very well. That's about all I have tonight, except I want to thank everybody for a good meeting.
I thank you, Counselor. Just to let you know, I believe that every subcommittee meeting is opened up to every single counselor. They can definitely attend, attended subcommittee meetings that I'm not on. And they do show grace and let you speak when it's your turn.
You're not at the table. That makes a big difference. You're just one of the audience, so.
Well, you can attend, and they will, they will recognize you if you have a question or a concern or an input. I know that we were supposed to have a all-subcommittee meeting, and that didn't work out too well, but we will have it in the near future. Counselor Curtin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think if anyone wants to know how to participate in committee meetings, they should have a little chat with Counselor Goff. He comes to every single one, and he gets his points across. So it is open for discussion, and council members do have an opportunity to op-on and get their questions in. I just want to go back to TIF. I do agree with the comments from my colleagues, some of the comments from Counselor Merritt and Counselor DiLorenzo. But the one thing that I want to highlight is the process. And this is the thing I believe sometimes needs to be clear. I think tonight was a disappointment because when you look at what I believe Jose and Goman New York, who is our financial advisor, could have went in depth into the TIF and the TIF areas because these meetings are all documented. There's a public hearing tonight. Obviously, the public weren't here. But it's good to get that information register. Council subcommittees are basically to discuss business, but council is the body that makes decisions, vote on items, deliberate about those topic at hand. So I do believe that we need to have a process in place where I believe that they should have come before council tonight, have a discussion, public hearing, it should have went back, and then come back for a vote because you give it an opportunity to make tweaks and so on. Nothing is perfect, but we have to follow a process. So I just want to say that's the reason why I could not vote on this tonight because once again, I didn't see a need to rush ahead. But that's either here or there. So I also want to give the Board of Ed and the entire administration, the teachers and so on, kudos. I reflect on the last couple of weeks and months with my children and what they go through and the Zoom sessions and what educators are doing to make sure our students are up to speed. I mean, both of my kids, they're bragging to each other, they're still able to maintain a 4.0 GPA. So that's a testament to parents who are at home, manage their own professional life at the same time, making sure that the needs of the students and those professionals within the schools that are doing their part to make sure our students are getting an education. I know that the students are adapting, but it's important for them to be back out in the classrooms, interacting with their peers. That's a vital part of their growth, per se, to be out there with their peers. So I just want to commend the school system for the job that they're doing in the town of Bloomfield. I think, you know, we have to look, you know, over the years, we've talked about the school budget and so on. But in this time that they're going through right now and how they have stepped up to the plate and deliver for our students, I have to commend them for the work that they're doing. And I just want to echo what Counselor Calhoun said, for the last two snowstorms, you know, once again, the DPW delivers. We're one of the unique towns that, you know, they're out there. They're making sure that there's salt in the roads, making sure that they're plowing. And not one day I could ever say for the last 18-plus years I've been in this town that I could ever say I've been stuck in Bloomfield and trying to get out. So I just want to commend them for the work that they have done. Hopefully, that's the, hopefully, it's not the end of the snow season. I still believe we have a couple, we have a month, a couple of weeks more to go. So with that being said, once again, good meeting tonight. And, you know, we'll just keep moving along. Thank you.
Counselor Wong?
I think you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, the libraries, Chair Davis and Co-Chair Mark, thanks for coming in for a robust report. It's so, I attend most and if not all the building committee meetings. So it's really good to have the public hear what I hear, and it's so diligent and it's a robust committee. So I'm just encouraged that we're moving along so well. Philly Park, I am an avid supporter of Parks and Recs. And I think that to Counselor DiLorenzo's point, we should continue discussions on how to complete that particular project and make sure it's in the best interest of all Bloomfield residents. And TIF, I'm so pleased that we moved forward with the TIF plan this evening. I think that Bloomfield is in desperate need of robust economic development and planning. And tonight showed that the council is willing to prioritize that as a goal. There is room for more information and presentation by our consultants, Goman and York. And if you, if the public wanted that information, they can certainly go to the recordings for the land use and economic development. And I think that we should move forward and make sure that we present this information in the upcoming meetings as we move forward in the development of the policy. So I'm very pleased with that outcome tonight. And from a utility assistance standpoint, this is an ongoing need and significant crisis, especially in Bloomfield. So if you're in need of a home energy audit, what that does is it saves money and it saves energy. You can contact Home Comfort Practice. You can call Miles at 203-673-4027, or email them at miles@homecomfortforpractice.com, Miles with a Y. And I think my last piece, "Do What You Can With What You Have Where You Are," Teddy Roosevelt. Thank you and good night.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I also am happy that we took some action on the TIF. I realize that not everybody was happy or perhaps prepared with all the information, but that's usually not unusual. I do feel that there was plenty of opportunity to get that information over time. And frankly, now we're doing everything on Zoom or website, that information is available. The, I think the staff may have gotten the wrong information or made the point that they thought they were there to answer questions that would have come up or from the council or from the public, and that they felt that yet another full explanation of what's in the plan, which has been going around and around for so long, wasn't necessary. So if some of you were waiting for that, although I had nothing to do with it, I apologize, but the information is still out there. And with that in mind, the next meeting likely to get a, it will be on the agenda for the approval of the Complete Streets Plan. So that's another document that will be on the website. You should probably get some early opportunity to review it and come up to speed. It will not be for a public hearing, but it will be for council adoption. So that's something we can spend some time on. Basically, it's, the winter is dragging on. We're all getting kind of loggy and tired. Some of us get out and do some snow showing or something, maybe not enough. But, you know, I can't wait for spring, which is in another 30 days. That's not going to solve all our problems, but it's going to put us right in the middle of the budget season. So I do hope that with all the compliments we're making for our departments that were prepared to raise salaries and add more personnel to their complement. So I have nothing more to say. I just, it was a good meeting. We had some things done. We heard from people, and let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
So thank you to everyone. I do believe that it's important that we get to have all voices at the table. And with the tipped thing tonight, even though I've been at some of those meetings, I did not read the 80-page document, to be honest with you. I was expecting a presentation on the project from both Goman New York and whomever else was there speaking on it. So I do believe that we lost a chance right there. I do believe, based on some information that I've gotten, more people watch the Youtubes of the town council meeting than they actually do of the subcommittee meetings. So we lost an opportunity to educate and inform, right? So we should, we should have done, I'm not going to say we could have done, we should have done a better job, and I'm hoping that this will be a lesson for the next time. I sat here throughout the meeting, and I ran through my head what I wanted to say during council comments. It is the last meeting that we have in Black History Month, but for me, Black History is 365. I wake up like this. And there is something that I do want to discuss or bring to the public space, but tonight may not be the night because that's still a little raw for me. But I would like to say, as far as politics go, if your politics becomes personal, when it becomes about you, you're no longer serving the masses. You're now serving yourself. And that kind of politics is not something that we need in this nicest town of Bloomfield. We've been called a lot of things. And that's probably mostly our fault. But I think the way that we treat each other is a direct reflection on our character. And I'm gonna leave that right there for now because I did say that I would talk about this when it's not so raw for me. This is not Washington. We don't play dirty politics, even though it's an election year. I understand when you're in battle and you get enemy fire. It's the friendly fire that I'm concerned about. And I do believe that there's a lot of things behind it, right? Years, built-up years of bias, racism, whatever you want to call it. But, you know, you see something, you say something. So that will definitely be a discussion that we will have, maybe not in Black History Month, maybe next month in Women's History Month. We can talk about it then. Never be limited by other people's limited imagination. Dr. Mae Jamison. And never, ever expect, never, ever, ever accept someone's label of you because they truly don't know who you are, and they've never walked a mile in your shoes. That's for me, Suzette DeBeetham-Brown. And with that, can I have a motion, please? I see motions. I see motions. I thank you. I believe this meeting was a little bit longer because all of our attendees have left. But I thank those that came out to make presentations, and I thank you for good.